We have a very short agenda tonight. We administer the oath of office to Tanny Keighley downstairs. And graciously welcome her as deputy clerk of this board. And also she's heading up HR in the county office. So welcome Tanny, pleasure board. Item number three, discussion and consideration of recommended fiscal year 2023, 24 budget. We discussed it, we threw it out in the last, last week, and we had a motion and a second on approving the budget as proposed and presented by the budget committee, which did a great job. They matched revenues and expenditures, and that motion failed by both three to two. So tonight we continue that meeting. Do we have any recommendations from any commissioners?
I'd like to read a statement.
What were yours? Uh, microphone.
All right, I'd like to just take a moment to read a quick statement that I wrote. I had to kind of put my, my thoughts on paper so I didn't get all of them. And a lot of that has to do with coming out of the last meeting that we had last Tuesday. So it seems that there's some confusion on the budget process. I hope to clarify some of these things for the citizens of Macon County. We're currently in the process of a proposed recommended budget. Last Tuesday's meeting was not the finality of the budget. Many items are still in the process of change, including adding to the budget, removing from the budget, or simply coming to an agreement. Since the last county commissioner meeting, I have been contacted by many people gripped by fear that this was the final vote. I'm sorry that many of you endured much fear and anguish. Better communication is needed regarding these items of business. Also, someone contacted me with the concern that I should not delay the budget process, therefore urging me to move forward and pass it. I just cannot and will not make a decision in that manner without taking the needed time to make a sound decision. Also, I understand it, if I understand this correctly, this board of commissioners is on track with what is needed to move forward. With all that being said, I'll share a few things tonight to help everyone better understand my position on this proposed recommended budget, and to hear from me and not from other sources as to why I voted against it last Tuesday, and what I would like to see adjusted for my vote to be in favor of it. Again, this is a proposed recommended budget, meaning nothing is set in stone until the budget passes by majority vote. As we approve the funds to each department, at that point, it is up to the departments to plan and spend according to the budget approval, because at that point, it's no longer in our hands. The proposed salary increases were set in recommended budget at four point five percent. As far as I understand it, the increase includes both salary increases and reflects the six new full-time positions. A deputy narcotics detective, these expenditures will increase law enforcement coverage. Three income maintenance caseworkers, two, and income ma- uh, income maintenance caseworker, three, full-time health department physician, animal control officer. All of this is recommended in FY twenty-four along with the COLA. Keeping in mind, the health human services also includes veteran services, along with health department, mental health, and senior services. A three percent cost of living adjustment and approximate one point five percent increase per employee, resulting in a four hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollar increase in FY twenty-four budget. A three percent COLA will result in budget increase of seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and four hundred and thirty-eight cents. So all of that to say, I am in favor of the increase for the employees. I understand the need for a wage increase because of how the inflation has caused me to adjust my own budget to keep up with all this in my day-to-day living. I especially understand for first responders, my support for the first responders will always be unwavering because of understanding the nature of your daily job. And that understanding has come courtesy of many of you in that field sharing with me the details of it all. Thank you all for all that you do to serve the public. Your efforts and your service do not go unnoticed by my family and I. Also to mention a growth rate in Macon County since FY twenty-one, twenty-two, we have seen a one point three percent increase while other counties around us experienced a point two percent growth rate. This will help to contribute to increased needs and services in our county that cannot be bypassed. The more people move here, the more services have to increase due to higher numbers in need of county services like medical, law enforcement, EMS, and many more. The sheriff's calls have increased by eight percent, and EMS calls increased by twelve percent since FY twenty-two. Being that our sheriff's department is bringing on a, a few new full-time positions, this will help alleviate some overtime and it'll bring families back home to spend time there. Social services are needed that much more as a result of this growth increase. From full-time health, uh, department doctor to emergency management needs, these are all services that we don't need to try to do without. New positions will increase the overall budget of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars that will be reflected in human services functions. Of that amount, approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars will be offset by increased revenue resulting from Medicaid expansion. Now concerning the millage rate and going revenue neutral, according to the numbers in our proposed budget book, bringing the millage rate down to point two seven will result in a revenue-neutral tax rate for FY twenty-four. Now I'm willing to drop down to even and go down to point two five. So once we understand that we don't just have pros, there's also cons to having the lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina. I typically only hear about the pros of having such a low tax rate. However, not addressing the cons simply helps us to contribute to making county citizens not seeing much needed improvements, improvements that the citizens are actually asking for. There are some improvements listed in the budget that address maintenance needs in the heavily utilized facilities, which we can absolutely discuss tonight. Vehicle purchases, um, Highland School, soccer field, H fact replacement at Southwest Community College Building, uh, the data center needs a roll-up door at the National Guard Army, installation of new phone system, and roofing Cowie School, just to, just to name a few. Now, the only other item I'd like to add to this is covering the pool at the Red Park. For those who have been asking me about this, I'm in communication with Coach Dewayne Gugu on researching and getting numbers for the, of cost of a project like this. This will make the pool available to not only the children in the fast community swim program, but also our FHS team and the entire community, and they'll be able to be used year-round. Now, this so far is where I'm at. I'm open to really hear what everybody has to say, so we can try our best to come up with a improvement today.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for the twenty-three, twenty-four Macon County budget. My motion will take the county manager, manager's proposed budget with the exception of a few items. With this budget, I would like to see the funds removed from the molar roller, which is eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Highland School Soccer Field, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Animal Control, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the new trucking dog box. The animal control position at fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. And the contingency fund was three hundred, what was the odd number, board?
Two nine three, three seventy-two.
Three.
Two nine three.
Two nine three.
Two seven two.
Two seven two. In this budget, I would like to add the hundred thousand dollars for the Zachary Park building repair and grading work to create practice fields. The hundred and sixty-five thousand, what was the phase?
Three seventy-seven, one sixty-five, three seventy-seven.
One hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars for phase two and phase three of the Highland School expansion, and two hundred thousand dollars for the body scanner at Macon County Jail. And at this time, I would also ask that there are no additional fees for Macon County Land Field, Highland's transfer station.
Chairman, turn the motion.
I need some clarification there. You didn't mention the revenue side.
Yes, yes. The proposed budget was sixty-four million.
Sixty-four, five, six, six, nine, seven, eight.
Six, six, nine, seven, eight. Recommended budget was sixty-four million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. No trouble.
So...
What revenue source do you want to decrease to offset these expenditures that you decreased?
We're going to decrease the millage rate.
The millage rate?
And I'll have that number for you just in a minute.
That's, uh, that's well and good, but the, the majority of these are capital items, and the millage rate is operating revenue. So we're cutting operating revenue to offset the cutting capital expenditures. So I would caution, that is the most reliable, our primary revenue source. That is our operation. So is that revenue neutral right now?
I understand, but I'm giving and taking in this budget. I'm giving county employees a raise. I'm also giving the taxpayers of Macon County a tax break.
Well, I'm just saying it could in the future, should the sales tax growth and, and things like that slow down in the future, um, into next year, this will become even more important.
And, and let me clarify, clarify something. In my proposed motion here, the increase wages for the county employees shall not be recurring. These, these, these raises will be good for twenty-three, twenty-four budgets.
But the cost, so it's not a cost of investment?
The purpose of that is just exactly what you just said. We can't predict the future.
So does it mean non-recurring versus recurring?
Yes.
But you're not proposing to take them away in next budget. I mean, once we implement a raise, we normally don't turn around and take it back out. You're not, you're not proposing that, right? Like if we get the COLA and the STEP, that would remain in next year's budget just as it is.
We can't predict the future, board. That's what you just said just a minute ago. I mean, I'm trying to work with everybody on this, this whole process, but this... I didn't say I was taking the raises away.
I just, I just wanted clarification.
Right, right, I understand.
When you say something's non-recurring.
Right.
My interpretation is you put it in for one year and then it's gone. So I just wanted to clarify.
Sort of like the COVID months. It was pre- it was promised and the federal government took it away.
Right.
Okay. So there's a reason behind that also. That's my motion. Um, I, I think that's really on the lines of where Com- Commissioner Young was at, um, at our last budget motion.
What was the final budget number?
That's what I'm trying to work on.
She's trying to work on.
And what would, and the tax rate?
So you're gonna have to bear with me if somebody else wants to file, no files.
The tax rate was what was presented earlier. Now that we've made a few changes, it was at point two six zero four.
You've made some changes.
But I've made some changes.
Proposed millage rate will be?
Point two, well, that's what she's working on now, but it's point two six zero four.
I don't know if we're allowed to speak, but just a clarified question. So that would be considered a bonus to us and not a raise?
I'm trying to present a budget that hopefully will get adopted tonight.
That's an amazing question.
Get numbers.
No.
About the molar roller, what are you gonna substitute for that? If you're gonna take it away, what's the fix?
The idea behind the molar roller is essentially this, there's nothing wrong with the interior of that molar roller, and the idea is to, people from Highlands have to come down to use that services and, as well as Nana Hala. If we can place that molar roller in a, a fixed spot.
Okay, that takes one of them to know anything about it.
And...
Did you guys do anything in?
We can't.
For the standing room, for the place that you say is permanent stock, to fit for the teeth?
Where, where's the molar roller? Where's the molar roller at this time?
Empty.
Okay, is it set up to be used?
Well, it's working.
Okay, so why can't it be used? We're, we're, in this budget, transit has five or six proposed new buses.
That's a liability.
What?
Carrying children around from school to schools because of liability on the county.
Okay, well, we have school buses.
You don't have diapers!
We're emotional, but do we need that?
I'm still trying to work on this.
It's going bad.
I'm sorry.
We reserve comments till after.
We do need clarification though, because I have never heard of giving somebody a COLA and a STEP, and then taking it back. That's not how it function. I mean, that changes the whole scheme of this budget and the numbers and everything. When you and I talked on the phone earlier today, I didn't get that broken. I thought you were saying that when we move into fiscal year twenty-five, that, you know, there was no guarantee that in fiscal twenty-five, we would continue with said COLA and STEP. And I told you, of course, you know, it's up to each board, every budget year, to determine what COLA or what STEP is given. And I explained, you know, the purpose of implementing the STEP in current year was to alleviate compression, because if you have a deputy that's been here four years, and you have somebody walking in the door brand-new, the STEP program moves that deputy that's been here four years through his pay scale, so that he's not making the same rate as somebody walking in the door. So that was my understanding when we talked today, that once you put in a COLA and STEP, that's their new salary. And then when y'all consider fiscal twenty-five budget, you would decide at that time whether you want to give another STEP and another COLA on top of their current new salary with said COLA and STEP as we move forward in fiscal twenty-five, so.
Call for the vote.
It hasn't happened.
We just have the number, what we're, we're willing to go.
Well, like I said, it...
Any of the businessmen on the board raise any prices last year?
What's that?
Did any of the businessmen on the board raise any prices last year? If so, are those prices going to be reduced in January of next year? Can't hear you.
Sir, I'm on salary with my company, and I haven't had a raise in my company in eleven years. Okay, so we know, we know. Well, you did, you just asked if we got a raise, sir, if we raised our prices. I'm not gonna argue. This, this is my motion, and I'm trying to do the best I can for the county employees and the taxpayers of this county.
We don't have county employees, we're not helping the taxpayers. You're not compensating the employees, you're not gonna have them. There's other counties paying more than what we're being paid now. Studies have been done, taxpayers have paid all this money to have these studies done, and it has shown that we're not where we need to be.
Okay, let's, let's just talk about, and I, I know this is Macon County, but Highlands just adopted their budget. They gave the employees five percent pay increase. They give law enforcement forty-two hundred dollars a year pay increase. Two years ago, Highlands, North Carolina, was the highest pay scale of police departments. They just lost an off- uh, an officer two weeks ago because they're no longer the highest pay scale of Highland, or the police departments. Are we playing this game? Because it seems like that the other municipalities and county governments will can- continue to increase their pay scale, so they can recruit people. As soon as somebody else pays more, those employees are gonna leave as well.
Do they give pay cuts?
Do they give pay cuts?
Or do they take away the pay?
I have no idea.
The recommendation is, the recommendation, and the thing about the budget, gentlemen, I've owned this for ten years. Every year prior to this, everything has been done. They present the budget always, Dallas budget, and discussions are not held, were not held in public. We come in, have a public hearing, and two or three people would speak. The votes were already there to approve the budget, and I voted against the budgets in the past. I'm, you know, I have to lay down and sleep tonight, but, but, um, uh, we want to open it up, have public board discussion. And in doing so, I can see, we've never had this many people in the budget meeting before, because we were trying to be transparent and open and value discussions. And now it's gotten out of control of where... Why are y'all here? What's the main, what's the number one thing in the budget in that field?
Salary. Cost of living.
And that's the vital part of this budget process, but there are so many pieces. Please let me speak, please. We have no public comment tonight. We had that at the previous board presentation. But there's a lot of parts to this sixty-four million, proposed sixty-four million dollar budget, and a four and a half percent increase is, is a generous salary. A lot of y'all don't believe it. I worked in county government for ten years, and somebody made the statement, how would they like to live off this salary? I tried it for ten years. And one morning I woke up and I said, well, I'm not making enough money to do what I want to do. I mean, I didn't, I didn't ramble past anybody, or we didn't have social media at the time. I didn't go complain to anybody. I would talk to my supervisors, try to justify why I thought I needed more money, and one day I realized it wasn't what happened.
So your recommendation is us quit our jobs?
Yeah.
What would happen if someone was walking?
Let me speak, please. One day I got up after ten years, and I said, I either stay here for another ten years, for ten years I would become invested. And I made the decision. It's my, it was my decision, and I left going into private sector. So I could emphasize, I have lived off the county budget for ten years, and raised two children off of it. It's tough, but it's, 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 it's tough all around. We're all being hit with inflation, just like you guys. We're hit, everybody's hit with inflation. So I've been there and done that, and there's a lot of parts to this budget, and I can see the negative aspects of opening it up for, we get, we get hit with everything in the world. And so we have a motion on the floor. We didn't get together and come up with these things. We don't, we, we've been, no backroom meetings on any of this. And we give more a few minutes here. Ever have one of you, Tanny?
Sorry.
We need a number, wait this, directly, uh, motion.
And one more thing I'd like to say in the private sector, we don't give across the board raises to our employees. When you, in the private sector, in the private sector, you earn your additional wages. If you don't do a good job, you don't have a job. And the problem with this stuff is, there are a lot of great county employees that work for Macon County. And I believe, and the reason why I said this recurring pay scale, is I think that needs to be looked at and maybe come up with a merit way of paying our county employees. And so that's why I said that. It wasn't to take funds away from the county employees. It was the simple fact, I have seen many, many, many county employees go way over and beyond the call of duty. And I believe that the pay scale should be looked at, and we need to identify what we really pay our county employees. I had one county employee say that I feel sorry for one of the employees, it's a single parent, um, don't have any money after the paycheck. Well, folks, I, sympathetically, I am sorry that's the case. But then you have to come back in and say, we can't justify paying one person additional funds because they're in a position with the county and not making enough money to survive. So, so therefore, this is my first budget cycle. The whole budget cycle, I tried in February to have this budget brought up, built, and presented all at one time, and it failed for a lack of a second. I was committed to spending all the time in the world. I made a boo-boo last week when I said prepared, that was the wrong word, because I tell you what, I bet you I've looked at this budget book more than any county commissioner has in the last many, many years. So I know, if I didn't know what was in this budget book, how do I have so many questions? How do I know so much about this budget book? Because I've spent the effort and the time, day in and day out, trying to make this work for everybody in, involved. The county employees got a little, the taxpayers are gonna get a little. I'm not against the molar roller, but I think let's, let's, at this point in the game, let's see how we can make this molar roller work. I'm not against it. If, if we go through this process, and that molar roller, this does not produce a great system, I'll come back in and we'll talk about the new molar roller. I'm not against it. I'm not against the soccer field in Highlands. However, we have no plans. We don't know what it's gonna take for Highland Soccer Field. So why carry that money on the budget? It makes no sense to me. So this is my motion. I'm trying to satisfy all the above, and I hope it works. That's where I stand.
Molar roller.
Yes, so for the, for the contingency reduction, that new number would be two eight six... seven one seven?
What do you mean, sir?
Two eight six, seven one seven. Would be reducing the contingency by that much. So the, that would be reducing the Medicaid cost settlement by one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And John's proposal is reduce the taxes for the difference, one million, one hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred and six dollars. And that reduction means the tax rate, instead of the twenty-seven cent revenue neutral with growth rate, it would be point two six one two. And I said, a lot of hearing from John, we're gonna implement the COLA and STEP, but when we're preparing twenty-five, there's no guarantee that we'll give another COLA and STEP we will consider at that time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You're not saying we're gonna give it and take it back. You're just saying, at next budget, we'll have to consider again whether or not we can continue this STEP.
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clear that for the record.
Yeah.
Because I think we definitely appreciate the COLA and the STEP. It's very much needed to remain competitive and take care of our employees. But, you know, that, it can get confusing when you say non-recurring.
Right, and these proposed capital expenditures, molar roller, Highlands, Red, or Soccer Field, those can all be funded separately through a fund balance. We're blessed with a very healthy fund balance in Macon County. It's not necessarily eliminating anything. It's postponing some decisions for further discussion, and we have the authority at any time to fund large items or small items out of the fund balance. It's for savings again, so to speak. So, gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor. We've heard the correct numbers. Is there second to this motion?
Well, if I may add to that, your new bottom line budget number would be sixty-two million, eight hundred, eighty-three thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars. So sixty-two, eight, eight, three, four, ninety-four. I'll make sure that would be read into the record. And I'll have to go back and make the appropriate adjustments to the budget ordinance.
So with that being said, my understanding is correctly with the raises that would, that would be approved with this, this is not being taken away from anyone that's...
No, no, that's my understanding, yes.
Is one time, non-recurring appropriation?
It's not non-recurring. Once you give it to someone, it's gonna recur, but there's no...
I'm just asking because I just want to make sure we clarify for everyone better.
Yeah, right, definitely. My understanding is, we implement the COLA, we implement the STEP. Effective July third, twenty twenty-three, just a couple of weeks away, if this budget's passed. And then next year at budget time, you know, salary raises we're given will still be in time. We're not taking them away. But you guys again, I'm sure we'll bring you another budget if we can afford it to say, we recommend a cost of living. We recommend continuing the STEP program, you know, to alleviate compression. And then you as a board will have that to consider at that time, whether you want to do an additional COLA and an additional STEP to move forward with our program.
And John, for the motor roller, you proposing that you leave me where it's at right now and then revisit buying the new next budget cycle?
Mr. Antoine, that is correct. I think through this motor roller, it was presented to us that the interior of this motor roller was in perfect shape. The problem is with this unit is, has hydraulic issues that they don't want to move from place to place. And so I would like to know on the motor roller, what the value is on the u, the unit that we have going forward to buy a new unit. I think through this, it is unwise decision just to go, let's go buy this eight hundred thousand dollar unit without knowing exactly what this unit is worth. We may get enough money through Medicaid funds and what this unit is worth. Somebody might be willing to have this unit at their county and use it as a permanent side. And we may get enough money to completely cover that without any revenue coming back. However, if this does not satisfy and work well, I will, I will be willing to go forward with this before next year's budget. But I think, I think we need to give it a little time so we can use the interior of this and, and bring the kids to this unit for a while.
Laura, what was the total budget reduction again? It was two eight six seven seventeen contingency.
Two eighty-six seven seventeen contingency would be reduced by that much. The Highlands Soccer Field would be removed at eight seventy-three six fifty-eight. The motor roller would be removed at eight sixty-nine nine eighty-three. The animal control truck and box would be removed at sixty-one eight fifty-nine. The animal control officer, which is the position in the fringe, would be removed at fifty-six six forty-four. And then the ads would be the, the design development and construction document portion of the Highlands pre-K slash middle school addition project at one sixty-five three seventy-seven. The full body scanner for the jail at two hundred thousand. Zachary Park improvements at one hundred thousand. So the net deduct slash increase there, one million six hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. So that's the net deduction, hence the new budget number of sixty-two eight eight three four ninety-four. And again, the revenue piece is to offset that, the WMA Medicaid cost settlement for the motor roller, five hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars. And then reduce the tax rate from twenty-seven cents to point two six one two cents, which is a reduction of one million one hundred seventeen thousand one hundred six dollars. So those two revenue sources combined are the one six eight three four eighty-four. So again, your revenues would be the sixty-two eight eight three four ninety-four resulting in a balanced budget.
I have a question for you, Kathy. To hold on to the motor roller right now as it is and just keep going as it is for right now, just till we can try out a just a new idea with this until. And the money can be set aside for contingency to where, it's not necessarily that we're gonna wait till the full year, but if they say in a couple of months we see that it's not working out, that money's there to make a purchase at that point. How, how does that negatively impact anything?
So a couple of considerations that I have that I want. Initially, when we first started the motor roller program, the primary, one of the primary reasons we, we have the business strategy that we do where we move the unit from school to school is because this, these children can't, they don't, they don't have the transportation. They, their parents don't have to get off work and use their sick leaves to transport the children to the appointment. All of that is done through paperwork that we get consent so that we don't have these, these parents that are needing to work. Many of them don't have sick days, vacation days. So they, they can't get off work to transport the kids. So that'll, that just eliminates that problem altogether. We come to them where they, they are at. They are at the school system. We come to them. So we can pull them out of class and if they're out that day, we just pull the next kid. So that's one of the primary benefits that we have by going to the school system. Two, I want you to consider that even though we, they have been able to keep the interior of the motor, motor unit pristine. That it's, the staff have taken, the maintenance team have taken great care of that unit. The pieces of that unit are becoming obsolete. So as things break and as things, you know, are damaged or over time like they do, we can't get replacements because they just don't make them anymore. It is, it's twenty years old. So that's, that's the dilemma we're in. It's not like we're not trying to make the most of, most benefit of what we have because we are, we're making, you know, we're seeing as many kids as we go. And, and the maintenance crew with these repairs that Josh recommended, I mean, we've been able to actually get it to move a couple of times, which is a great thing for us. And we'll keep doing that because it's gonna take two years. By the time we say, yes, go, it's gonna take another two years before we have the unit because of the timeframe of supply chain issues and, you know, that kind of thing. So I would, I would hope that you would take all of those into consideration, the quicker that we can get it into the budget. And we have, this year we have that Medicaid cost settlement fund that offsets over half of the unit itself. We, we want, you know, you guys asked me to go find some money. We've got some money. I hope we can take advantage of it and use it towards this unit. And, you know, the dental program generated a lot of this Medicaid cost settlement themselves. So it should go back to the service for those kids. We are, you know, we're trying to do what you're asking us to do. We put out bids for the unit. I think that we're gonna come in with some good bids. I think you're gonna be pleased with, with the bids that we received. And, and I think we can make this happen. And I hope that you will reconsider and put this into the budget.
So delaying it basically puts at risk being in a position where if something breaks down, cannot replace the parts, that shuts it down.
That's, that's what Mike, when we were working on this, that's what we were coming in across the, all of these issues that we were having is not that, you know, it's gonna take a while till we get them. They just don't exist anymore. They don't make those parts anymore. So we can't even get those parts. So that's, it's just that old of a unit.
So would you state again, what counties in this region has a motor roller?
We, I know that at one time, Jackson County did have one and Buncombe County has one. They would love to have one. And I think it's a wonderful idea to see what we could do with the unit itself if there's a county that wants to do the fixed model, if they have a location, they can do that. It's not the optimal setting because we can't, we can't go from school to school and then you throw in the fact that the kids can't be, you know, have transportation issues and, and the parents have to get off to come take their kids to, to the dentist. So that, that's, that's the business model that we have.
And, and I appreciate that. The, that is a huge benefit for these children already where other counties do not have this motor roller. All I'm asking you to do is work with us, find out what that motor roller is worth. And let's go from there. By all means, I want these children to have dental work. We need to, that could possibly not have the, uh, the dental.
You know, that, whoever attains, if, if we per se sell the motor roller unit to somebody, they're gonna have the same issues that we're having now, that the, the parts aren't replaceable. And so it's not a permanent solution. It's a, you know.
Only beginning with these in Kathy.
We already have them. We've, they came in, they were due May thirty-first. Yeah, we, they're here. We have them.
But through this budget process, one thing that I have definitely learned is it's a give and take. It is, I mean, that's, that's the way it is. I mean, you, through the whole picture of this budget process, one person's not satisfied, this person's satisfied. So you have to find common ground. And I did a lot of, of thinking and studying on this motion today. And how do we, how, I mean, Chairman Higdon says, I want the numbers to go down. You know, I mean, he has a problem with the numbers. I've, I've got all the, you know, the county employees we want to raise. Well, the taxpayers are screaming out here in the private sector. You know, we're all struggling. We're all in this boat together. My motion is a give and take. And I think through this process, no, this is not the, the motion that I wanted to present. However, through common ground, this is where.
I just hope that the children aren't the ones that are sacrificed.
That's correct.
Take away pickleball, give them dental care.
Hey folks, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. I'm sorry, I've been interrupting.
Just trying to find a compromise. I gotta say, gentlemen, we, I'm for these kids at this point and whatever we can do to help them. You know, we have, what's our fund balance at right now? Forty-two point six?
Estimated end of about forty-two point four.
Okay. There's no reason for us to really be carrying that much over in the fund balance because it's the taxpaying dollars that have just basically been sitting there unallocated, not go to anything. So what it does is we're collecting money and not doing anything with the money. I don't agree with that. I don't like that idea. When it comes to these kids right now, yes, there's a lot of give and take. If this is gonna benefit the kids and you're saying that it's two years out if we make a decision today, resale value then for that thing is gonna be close to nothing because if the people who buy this, they're gonna be in the same position where they can't get parts for it. What's, I mean, we don't, what, is there a resale value on this at all where it stands?
Again, I haven't had an opportunity to do that to, I've never even been bad in how to do that. I would have to research how to get, get the resale value of a unit this old and, you know, get some experts in here to do that.
So right now, we really have no idea what, what we can basically get out of it to put towards the new unit, right?
And, and when we disneyed the adult dental plan, two years. We had equipment in there that wasn't twenty years old that we put up for surplus that nobody wanted because it was so outdated that it's still sitting in storage. We had a Panarex, Panarex X-ray machine that wasn't twenty years old, but we couldn't get anybody to buy it because it was outdated compared to, you know, what they are used to.
So this is one point of the budget that can put us in a position right now of medical malpractice. This has to do with kids. I was aware of that information until now. Is that, is this something you're willing to compromise on?
And we can do a budget adjustment. We can do, we can put anything we want to learn out of that the problems you mentioned for the children. No problem with it. We're just trying to get a general fund budget together tonight. And then if next week we want to fund whatever, our next board meeting, out of that fund balance, that's in our discretion, solely in our discretion.
Commissioner Antoine, and you just hit it, the nail on the head just a minute ago. We have forty-two million dollars. All I'm trying to do is find common grounds with off the budget that we all can live with. I'm not, I'm not interested in defunding the things that is needed to make this county better, improve the livelihood of any of our citizens. The job in front of us is to give and take and find common ground for the betterment of all that's involved. This budget, this motion that I've presented, I believe there's common ground there. I mean, we just heard that they fund pickleball so we can get funds for something else. I mean, i- it's, it's ongoing. I mean, everybody has their own interest, so.
Chairman, boldly respect, we have a motion on the floor and we need a second for discussion. Just to kind of stick with our procedure and keep on track.
Go on, say it.
Say it.
Our motion, second on the fourth. Further discussion.
Could I ask John the third page, just so I know, when you say no new fees, there are three or? Am I to, none of those, some of those? I mean, the transfer fee, that's just a pass-through fee. That's, that's not me increasing. That's reacting to what the board did. So I can't, is, I mean, of the three fees, are you talking about all of them or? So even the one that's to pay for a board action, is, you still don't, you still don't want that in the budget?
That's correct.
Sir, I, I'm just, I, I, I don't care, I'm not, I'm not getting on to you about the give and take. I'm trying to understand how you don't want to approve something that is a reaction to something that a board approves. I mean, this is not me trying to gin up extra revenue. This is me asking the people of Highlands to pay me to bring their stuff down the mountain, uh, which would be less than it would cost them to bring it, which is why this thing exists.
Chris, I'm not gonna bring this friction between Highlands, Franklin, Nantahale or any of this other stuff. But all due respect, sir, Highlands people sent fifteen million dollars down this mountain, actually almost sixteen million dollars. And that landfill was taking, taken from Highlands when we built a transfer station. When that landfill was closed, we came up with a transfer station and I really believe that we can save the taxpayers money by exploring the idea of sending all that garbage to Homer, Georgia. Jackson County does it, Cherokee does it, and I honestly believe instead of turning right to bring that stuff to the Macon County landfill in Franklin, we can turn left on Highway twenty-eight, go through Warburg, hit four forty-one, go to Homer, Georgia and dispose of that. I'm just saying that we're already paying eight dollars more per ton. So, you know, I think.
But I'm paying twelve fifty per ton. And keep in mind, I mean, that sixteen million doesn't come to me. I'm an enterprise fund. I appreciate, I appreciate what Highlands does for the rest of the county. But I'm one department that does for Highlands what I don't do for anybody else. That half million dollar budget of that transfer station is not paid for in Highlands. It's paid for by everybody in the county. Because only the people that use it get the benefit and it's a dead loss of five hundred thousand dollars. I, I wish y'all would brag about the fact that Highlands is getting something that nobody else does because that's how my department treats them. They have a transfer station and we're spending five hundred thousand dollars to run it. All I'm asking for is that if I'm gonna haul your stuff the rest of the way where everybody else has to take it, you pay the fare on your tonnage. And it's, and it's a reaction to the board approving the tonnage rate that my transportation costs. And it's, it's forty grand.
And I'll just have to say, that's not a make a great deal, but starting July, from here on until the next budget cycle, there's gonna be a lot of work. And I will be looking at a lot of different angles, how to make things a little better for all the above. And that, and that's, that's why I said that.
You want, Mike, you want to make my department better? I mean, is that what you just said?
I said I want to try to make things change for the betterment of Macon County. And if that includes taking this garbage to Homer, Georgia, then that's what I would propose to do.
Well. Um, discussion, more discussion on that topic. We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion among the board?
I'll just say that I think it's motor roller or something I put a lot of thought into. I'd really like to see it in the budget. That's kind of where I'm hung up. I've run the numbers. Look, to take in over half a million dollars for an eight hundred thousand dollar purchase, that three hundred thousand dollars that's obligated to the county is gonna cost us around fourteen thousand dollars a year. The program itself holds neutral. I do appreciate the compromise and I want the compromise as well. I just feel like that's something that I would want to see in this budget. So for that reason. I just feel like that's something that I would wanna see in this budget, so for that reason.
That's on the approval of this board. Any further questions, gentlemen?
So, are you willing to compromise on that, John, or not?
What's that, sir? No, I, I, I mean, I've, I've give and take with my motion. That's the motion that's on the floor. I think from here on forward, when this thing, uh, if we find that it is absolutely gotta be ordered, we get more information, then we have fund balance. But the motion for this budget is a balanced budget. It's give and take. We're, we're going along with raises for the county employees. We're giving the taxpayers a break. And we're funding a lot of stuff to move this county forward. This is my first budget. And, and I did a lot of thinking. I mean, this is a balanced budget that I feel that we have given, taken for the betterment of all the above. Is it everything that I want? Absolutely not. Is it, is it the best that I could come up with? I think so. And the, the three hundred thousand dollars for the molaroller, if we can get a hundred, hundred fifty, I think there's just, we lack information where we go forward with this molaroller. And that's why I pulled the molaroller. I think it's unknown. The unit is still being used every single day. They're gonna have to use it for two years, Damien. So if, if we can't have two months to investigate what this unit is worth, I mean, if it's gonna break in two months, we're in trouble anyways. And so, I mean, and that's where I stand on it. But anyways, uh, the motion, second.
Motion second. All the question, all the favor seen, if I'm raising your right hand. Oppose? Motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Make a motion, uh, for the Macon County twenty-three, twenty-four budget to be adopted as presented on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. Schill, are you referring to the motion that I made on the thirteenth?
Yes, that's when we first brought this package here. We, we studied here for a week or so. And one of the, we studied on June, that was presented on June the thirteenth, twenty, twenty-three, that's the one.
Yep.
Any discussion? A motion second on the floor. All the favor seen, if I'm raising your right hand. All opposed, same side. Nails three to two.
It's the most compromise.
Well, let's, uh-
It's only three hundred thousand accounting money, and we've got forty-two billion in fund balance.
In my head, what I'm looking at is why I don't want this, is why I think that's a silly, that's a silly thing for us not to be able to push forward. Now, three hundred thousand is what we're gonna end up paying for this. I hear what you're saying, John, in the fact that if it breaks in two months, we're still, you know, we're still a problem anyway. But I think that's a silly thing for us not to be able to compromise.
Is that the one sole issue?
That's my issue.
And my, the reality is, guys, the reality is- And my people in county office, I'm sure I brought in twenty-three million dollars in tax-free revenue. And in this entire budget process, for the Macon County Veterans Services, I've got her veterans mentioned one time. Twenty-three million dollars in tax-free money. And not one time-
I mean, I'm gonna tell, I mean, I think the, um, uh, researching some of this, but I'm gonna tell you right now, three hundred thousand dollars, um, is not worth, um, uh, not having a, a adopted budget. But my whole game plan here was, is once we got more information, take that three hundred thousand dollars out of this forty-two point six million dollars, and let's move forward. So that's the whole thing. When, we're talking about a budget and funding. We're talking about a savings account that belongs to the taxpayers. All I was trying to do is remove those funds out of this budget cycle. And once it's presented, all the information. I haven't seen the, the, the bids on these, on this molaroller. I know what's in the budget, but at the same time, if we're hung up on this molaroller and you guys think that that's the absolute number one thing that's causing this budget to fail, then by all means, fund that three hundred thousand dollars.
I think we could have a little more discussion. Go ahead, get back to the options for use of the thing. I mean, and I apologize, I missed the board health meetings, not the liaison, not at these meetings. I would like to roll that up as a support down. Yes, you know, before we spend any, let's, for all options for use of that, it's available service to the community. It's, 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 I mean, it's tremendous that these children are getting early dental care otherwise they wouldn't get. But I think we could have had a little more discussion. I'll take the hit on that.
And, and I can, I can bring you more information.
Yeah, but can you read it in the next two minutes? Now, uh, and I'm just saying that, hey, to get this budget passed, next week, next month, when we gather that information, we can fund that. We've got forty-two million dollars in that. But, but to, but to try to get this budget through tonight, I will concede, John, I think you will concede. And I think it's a great suggestion by Commissioner Antoine, that if John wants to amend the motion, I have no, you, you, you made a motion, so I was gonna-
So a couple of things that, that, uh, from a planning perspective, if we have intentions on buying the molaroller, I think it needs to be budgeted. You know, Chairman, we've talked about this over the past couple of years. Fund balance is more or less a savings account for us to, to pull and use and pay it on a planned purchase. Now is the appropriate time to budget that. So that's kind of where I'm, where I'm standing on this. I will say a compromise is, uh, is obviously needed, and I wanna say thank you for, for everybody engaging in this. Like, if we can all agree on the COBA, we can all agree on the Highland School project, right? Um, help me out here, Damien, is there anything that you, can we build this budget together and everybody, let's, let's get out of here?
I think we're all gonna do that.
So we're, so what I'm hearing is we wanna take out the Highland soccer field, which-
Delay it.
We wanna delay it, which is, which I think everybody agrees with. That report isn't coming back till April, I'm sorry, till May, which is next year's budget kickoff anyways. So really, the only thing we're in disagreement about is molaroller. Is it, is it, is it, is it, in the, in the, in the animal control?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was in the proposed, uh, so realistically, um, I could have sworn in my motion that Commissioner Antoine said he did my motion and voted against. Okay. Uh, so anyways, I mean, it, it's my understanding, we're sitting here, um, and the biggest discussion we went through, and the hang-up is this three hundred, three thousand dollars of county funds to proceed with the purchase of a new molaroller. We have to turn around to take the Medicaid funds and put them back in for this. And, uh, so we do have, uh-
And the animal control is not a dead issue?
It's not, it's not a new position. The truck and the dog box are new items because we're changing the position from a, from a, uh, an administrative position to a on-the-road patrol position. So that's, that's what I'm asking for, is for the truck and the dog box so they, we can get another person on the road.
Do that position have a zero budget?
Yeah, we wanna have a discussion about that.
They have a zero budget.
Yeah, because of the reallocation. We need to have an open discussion about future animal control, the form we can enhance it. Uh, there's, we've had a number of complaints, you know, you're with us on that.
And Mr. Chairman, again, if, would it be possible, would the board consider, if it, if it's about getting the overall number down, would the board consider a reduction in revenue from interest on investment earnings? Being as, we're talking about removing primarily capital, and that is a capital source of revenue. Uh, but we had tied those interest on investment earnings to, again, when you go to that, um, add the one tax rate, that is what our capital improvement plan, which contains these capital projects, including Franklin High School, all those projections are based upon the twenty-seven cent tax rate that is the revenue neutral level. And again, that being our most consistent so, uh, source of operating revenue, should sales tax come down and should interest on investments come down, which they will, that your tax collections remains constant. So what we could potentially be into, you know, we're, uh, we could now be impacting our capital improvement plan, um, as well as the operation of this organization. But should things taper down, or should things cool off economically, um, you're looking at that reduction in revenue. The only way to get it back is going to be a, a tax increase, and, and if things should go down, I just fear that, you know, things won't, that is the, the wrong time to, um, to increase taxes when things are, are on the way down. And this being at the revenue neutral rate, um, you know, again, that was a very conservative projection. But that is, uh, that source of revenue is critical to the operations of this organization. And again, it's totally up to this board. Um, I just, as my man, as manager, I feel like it is my responsibility just to let you know how important, um, that that revenue source is and, and to our operating budget and the consistency that it provides, uh, and the surety that it provides to the operations of this organization.
We say that, and we did have a great year on revenue, sales taxes, um, earned, earned interest on investments, higher than average collection rate on add-on. So we had a revenue stream. We have a second, we have a motion, or we have a miss?
We have, we have done a motion.
We have a motion?
No, we don't, we don't. No, we haven't revised this.
Chairman, I think we're in the process of building.
It ended up like a motion.
It failed. And it failed.
It failed, yeah.
Oh, we're compromised now.
Okay, so we kinda get the consensus, put the molaroller back in, right? Now, what about the animal control officer? Y'all kind of talk a little bit about that, like, all I've got right now is the molaroller.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss that.
All right, so, um, if, if you want to, do you wanna reduce the tax rate or reduce the interest earnings?
Well, where's the, where's the taxpayers gonna get a break?
I'm just asking the question.
No, I'm just saying, if you reduce, if you reduce the interest earnings on those, that investment, that is no reduction.
I understand.
Two million dollars in revenue is two million dollars whether you get it from, uh, interest or you get it from taxes. Uh, if, if you have a problem with the lower mileage rate and you got two million dollars coming in from, uh, from interest on your revenue, then use that two million dollars to build back the twenty, or whatever, uh, mileage rate. It's, uh-
I recommend to draw this from twenty-seven to twenty-six.
Well, that's, that's changed, by putting the molaroller back in.
Let's go back, back there.
Here we go again.
Which our business, you know, we're projecting to make a, a capital improvement plan, a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year plan. I mean, that's a great point. That, that's based on that rate. So what happens if, if we decide to go through the high school?
What, what do you mean?
What I'm, what I'm saying is if I still come below.
I think at some point, the, 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 the high school budget-
That means the following years, we have to adjust it to account for the, the one or two-year deficit.
And we talked about the fund balance a long time, but if you get involved in a high school project, this fund balance is gonna allow you to house some money, or your credit, or your debt service, things like this. And it's gonna be positive for Macon County. And, um, and it's, everybody knows I'm for a new Franklin High School, uh, and the reasons for that. So, so I'm not against having a, a, uh, fund balance that's, that may be perceived as too high because that's gonna come into effect when you start putting all this together and, uh, funding a new high school, the, the projects.
Got those numbers?
Yes. So just to recap, okay. So, original proposed budget sixty-four, five, six, six, nine, seventy-eight. Okay, so sixty-four, five, sixty-six, nine, seventy-eight is the original, um-
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget. So still taking out the animal control officer fifty-six, six, forty-four, taking out the truck and box sixty-one, eight, fifty-nine, taking out the soccer field at seventy-three, six, fifty-eight. We would reduce contingency by two eighty-five, six, fifty-seven. We would add still a Highland free play slash middle school design development instruction dogs of one sixty-five, three, seventy-seven. The full body scanner at two hundred thousand, Zachary Park improvements at one hundred thousand. That's a net deduction of eight hundred, twelve thousand, four hundred, forty-one dollars. So the new budget would sit at sixty-three million, seven hundred, fifty-four thousand, five hundred, seventy-seven dollars. So again, six, three, seven, five, four, five, thirty-seven. And if you're wanting to lower the tax rate to offset that deduction, that rate would now be, uh, point two six, three six.
Let me ask you a question. When do we have a revenue neutral situation? And the law, you bring it down to the revenue, uh, neutral situation, and that was at twenty-seven cents, right?
Yes, the revenue neutral with growth is twenty-seven cent. The revenue neutral without growth was twenty-six point five seven cents.
And it just caused my, I just don't understand. I didn't think we could go below the revenue neutral.
You can adopt whatever tax rate you want. There, I think there is an upper, upper limit, but of course, we'd never be that. You could leave it at forty cent. You could adopt it at-
The law, the law applying to revenue neutral is simply that the revenue neutral rate has to be stated.
In the budget message.
I mean, I, I would support this if we could use our interest on investments to cover the gap. And I could go, I could compromise over that.
And when you say you can use the, uh, interest for the revenue gap, what do you, what do you?
What I'm saying is we use our interest on investments to cover the gap, but it'd keep our, just because we base, you know, we calculate a five-year, ten-year plan, and we base everything we have on a five- or ten-year plan. This is going to kink that whole system. All the presentations we've had by our financial advisors, when in the past couple of years, interest rates have gone up so substantially that we're having, uh, a very good return on our investments. So if we use the return on our investments to cover this gap, I could, I could support that.
I'll speak that motion.
And not give the taxpayers a, you know, credit on their property.
I'd, I'd like to make it a form of a motion.
Your proposed weekly tax rate twenty-seven.
Can you say point seven?
As revenue neutral rate.
Revenue neutral with growth rate, twenty-seven.
Revenue neutral without growth rate was?
Twenty-six point five seven.
Then the, I mean, we're not getting sixty-four point zero six four difference in mill rate.
And all the coal and stuff like that, the pay increase, it's stayed in there.
I mean, yes. Really, it's a compromise, somewhat a compromise to, to combine what Mr. Sherrill has suggested with, you know, our, our tra, our trajectory on our plan from a county standpoint.
Well, the fortunate thing about it, our revenues are right this year. The money's there. It's, it's, it's our accounting terms to how we use it, what we draw from, what we spend. I like John's approach. Yes, I would like to see something, uh, in the form, if at all possible, a decrease in the, uh, add-on tax rate, which benefits everybody a little bit, one bill, if, or we were down to less than a, actually a bill. But I think that's just an acknowledgement, hey, we're, we're rewarding the employees, but we'd like to at least acknowledge that the taxpayers deserve just a little break. And, uh, so that's what we're at. You made, you, you made...
And that's in the form of a motion.
You were talking about legal billiards.
Yes, sir.
At twenty-seven.
And reducing interest earnings by the eight, twelve, four, forty-one.
So we have a new budget, don't we?
The bottom-line budget number would stay the same. Does, I mean, the, with that number read up earlier, sorry, sixty-three, seven, five, four, five, thirty-seven.
That's thirty-six.
That's the new number.
That's the new number, yes. After all of those changes that are read up a moment ago. So basically, what Josh has recommended is a substitution. Instead of lowering the tax rate from twenty-seven cent to twenty-six point thirty-six cent, if I'm understanding correctly, correct, if I'm misunderstanding Josh, so instead of lowering the tax rate from twenty-seven cent to twenty-six point three-six cent, which reduces the revenues by eight, twelve, four, forty-one, Josh is proposing to, we've budgeted one point eight million of interest earnings, to reduce that number by the eight, twelve, four, forty-one instead.
And then see, he's imagining...
This man, he's imagining we're reducing a non-recurring revenue source to match a non-recurring expenditure, rather than reducing a non-recurring expenditure and, and reducing a recurring revenue source. So it's basically, that, that's a good thing, because that interest on investment, it might not be there next year. But while it's here, we're capitalizing on it, we're able to do this motorola and move forward. But if it's not there next year, the motorola's in, we have it done, and we can keep on trucking without any impact to our operations.
Look, there, um...
My question is, how do we reduce interest earnings? How, how do we reduce interest? I mean, if the money is invested, the interest is going to come in. How do you reduce that?
You asked this, too.
No, how, how do you stop interest from coming in on an investment?
Don't.
Exactly, so how are we going to reduce that?
You're reducing, I thought the number was the problem.
The number is the problem for the simple fact that we're not recognizing a tax deduction for the property owners of this county. I have done this. My, my motion on this budget was we're going to reward the county employees, but we're also going to reduce the millage rate to give the taxpayers of this county the same amount of money.
And I'm just saying, I can't, and I just, the reason I made this statement I did about the interest earnings and reducing that source of revenue is because seeing the importance of the add-on tax collections on the operating budget, and, and knowing that that is the primary source of revenue, I can't in good faith say to go below the number that myself, the financial advisor, and our finance officer, at twenty-seven cents, revenue-neutral, the lowest tax rate in the state, that that's what we based our capital expenditures on, that's what we based this op, based this operating budget on, and that's the amount of revenue that we need to run this organization. So I can't in good faith say go and reduce the primary revenue source another eight hundred thousand dollars, and we're already having to take on cost of living adjustments, we're already having to take on increases in CPI, cost of goods increases, increased demand, and if, should that continue, and, and the sale, and at the same time, the sales tax fall, then we're just going to be stuck.
Okay.
So I, that's all I'm saying.
But we're dealing, but we're dealing with revenue that's already there. You're talking about interest earnings. All I'm talking about is give the taxpayers that credit, take those interest earnings out of there, and offset that for the, for the taxpayers. That's all I'm saying, is let's compromise, identify that the county employees deserve a raise, and let's identify the fact that the private sector out here, the private property owners, are struggling just like everybody else.
You're already getting a six hundred dollar a year tax decrease based on the point seven millage.
We don't, we don't, we don't need any. Uh, we don't need any, we're, we're discussing this, and we invite y'all in here tonight, so please, out of respect, allow us to do this. We're the ones that have to explain it to our constituents.
We're the taxpayers.
And, uh, yes, you are, and we are too. So we're the ones that have to explain it, so please afford us the respect to have these discussions. All right, here we are. We got a motion in the second. Tell them where you at. And I like the idea of giving the taxpayer, taxpayers a break.
He is second in motion, um, so, um, call for a vote, I guess.
Any more discussion?
Still on the twenty-seven cent.
Yeah, and I'd like to see it reduced some. I mean, we, we have the same income coming in, it's just a different revenue stream. We always have the advantage as elected officials to raise the add-on tax spending money. Don't remove that, but, uh...
And, and I still think in the worst package that we had, it was at twenty-seven cent, and I'm, and I'm committed to that. And I think that's in Josh's motion.
Well, and I'll, I'll just add, and I probably shouldn't go here, but I want to say, you know, I, I do appreciate, you know, everybody on this board and their attempt and their political conviction in trying to really keep our county, uh, fiscally responsible, and really trying their best, and I, I will say, I, I do appreciate that, as a taxpayer myself. But I want you to keep in mind, we are the lowest tax rate in St. Louis, Carolina. Look at what we're able to do with the funds that we're, that we collect. And so I look at this from a ten-thousand-foot perspective, and it's, it's really quite impressive. I mean, it really is. So, so please don't lose sight of that, you know, to Danny's point the other day, I'm sorry, Commissioner Higgins' point, uh, Mr. Antoine's point. I think we'd all like to see some, some large capital investments in this community, and I think this is the point in time where you budget that. I'd love to see the mill rate at twenty mils, but the fact is, when you set a plan, five-year, ten-year, twenty-year plan, based on certain mill rates and, and add alarm rates, what scares me is if you start adjusting those rates, well, maybe you trend downward this year, but then whenever you have to correct, you have to correct steeper than the, than the correction downward. So to me, it's kind of like an airplane. Hey, nonstop, I just feel like it's like an airplane, you know, airplanes don't take dramatic, you know, leaps up or down. You kind of trend in a direction. If we're trying to trend in a certain direction, you steer that way, and I think that's the direction of sport. But I do want to say thank you, and thank you for your, again, political convictions, and again, it's, it's healthy discussion. And, uh, but there's nobody here, you know, matter, we're all going to shake hands and smile, walk out, but at the end of the day, um, I think this, this is a healthy budget, and, uh, if it don't work, we'll try again.
We get to try it again.
I would say we'll have to. I would like to add, your comment is that we're all, uh, in the Franklin High School project, we're all looking on grants. If the people who are looking at making decisions on this grant money, if we receive it, there's a piece up there called ability to pay. Twenty, twenty-seven cents may be a negative in getting this grant. And if you lower it more, it's definitely going to work out of your favor of getting that grant money. You're talking about fifty to sixty million dollars. It's, and we've lost money before because it's viewed that Mecklen County has the ability to pay. And so they look at other counties that have less ability to pay, and they get the money. So let's not strip ourselves here to the point that we'll be viewed as more of a selfish group or somewhere like that. I, I think we, we have a good organization here, we have a, uh, leadership that wants us to move forward, we all want to move forward. And, but you, you don't want to be viewed as, uh, having the ability to pay, uh, for your council projects. So I, I think revenue-neutral is at twenty-seven cents, I'm with you. And, and that's in your motion, that's what I said, I thought I was, understood that in your motion a while ago, right? Yes, sir. Okay.
I just, I, I just, I, you know, uh, especially young, um, I appreciate, uh, you know, I consider you a friend of mine and, and this board and everything else. But without recognizing the taxpayers of this county that are not in this room tonight, um, I, I think that, um, we have, uh, we just ignored the fact that they deserve a raise also. That's where I stand.
Okay, gentlemen, our discussion. The proposed budget would be sixty-three, being seven hundred fifty-four, seven hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, five hundred thirty-seven dollars. Have a motion taken on the floor, what's the place of the board? All favor. Please see to probably raise your right hand.
As general taxpayers throughout this county, we need to get this thing done so she can do her thing. And I'm not voting against, John, you had a great, we're getting the money in, doesn't matter where it comes from, I guess, but I would like to, uh, I would like to see that really great draw. Uh, next item on the agenda is, and you will present a final draft of that to, uh, some point or before.
Yes, so, of course, I had various versions ready for tonight.
Figure it out.
The big thing is the sixty-three, seven, fifty-four, five, thirty-seven is your bottom-line number, with the changes listed. But I'll be happy to, or to correct the budget ordinance.
Folks, keep it down or go outside. There's business going on.
So I'll be happy to correct the budget ordinance in those various places and distribute it to the board, and we can put it on the county website, so that the public can see the final numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Helped the discussion. Uh, item number four, we're going to remove that report from the broad bank committee. Has removed, any other businesses needed? All right, gentlemen, do I, will I entertain a motion for the chairman?
So move. Thank you, Chairman.
If you don't say it, we'll stay there all night. My motion is second, all favor see to probably raise your right hand. Thank y'all.